Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is May 7th, 6:00 PM in the evening. I'd like to call our regular meeting to order, invite you to stand and join us in an invitation tonight led by Pastor Quinn Snyder of the Life Church. And following that, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Snyder.
Good evening. My name is Quinn Snyder. I'm a pastor at Life Church and it's my honor and privilege to be here this evening. Would you pray with me? Dear Jesus, we thank you for this day and for this time to come together as leaders of our community. We ask for the wisdom and discernment to effectively make decisions as we shape the future of our city and our community. Bless us with knowledge, wisdom, and creativity as we structure and plan for the things discussed here tonight. We ask that your hand of protection be with all the members of this city council and with our city. Please bless each and every person here as the leaders commence with tonight's meeting. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Snyder. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it looks like we have a full council tonight. Would like to move along with the approval of the agenda, which will be automatically approved unless somebody would like to change something up. Okay, seeing nothing, then we'll just move ahead to our second item tonight, which is presentations. And we have a community presentation tonight. The Island County Youth Coalition presentation by our very own Counselor Tara Heisen. Counselor Heisen?
Hello, and so I'm changing hats. My day job when I'm not here is with Island County Human Services and I'm the coordinator for the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition. So I'm going to update the council on what the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition has been doing. This is what I do all day. Not present, but the things that I'm going to talk about. So I'm going to do a really brief synopsis of what the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition is, who we are and what we do. But the majority of today's presentation is going to be based on recent results from this past year's Healthy Youth Survey data or Community Survey and other data books. So it's going to be a combo, this is what the Coalition does slash kind of the state of our youth and some community level results, which I think you will find interesting. So our Coalition, we just redid our mission statement. I don't remember what it was before, but it wasn't very impressive. And this really summarizes our work. Through advocacy, awareness, and action, we will foster an inclusive community culture that strengthens families, reduces substance misuse and abuse, and promotes physical, mental, and emotional wellness. That's a little hard to read, I apologize. So the Community Prevention and Wellness Initiative, CPWI, which I'll probably revert to acronyms, and if I do, just wave at me or something and I'll try to tame that. But the CPWI basically is a substance abuse prevention initiative. So we get grant funds and we can use those grant funds to implement strategies and programs and public awareness campaigns and community trainings and teacher trainings targeted at reducing youth substance abuse. As you'll see in some of the data that I present later, our community can really, really use some trauma-informed and mental health resources, which the Coalition can't directly spend funding on because it has to be substance abuse prevention, but a lot of the risk factors are the same. So we are able to tackle those in kind of a roundabout way. So basically, what is a community coalition? A community coalition is a group of volunteers from a bunch of different walks of life. And one of the grant requirements is that we have at least eight members and that those members be from 12 different sectors. These are our current members. The sectors, the little box on the right, okay, I've never used this before, so I'm going to try to not hit Blaine. Okay, so the categories in bold, law enforcement, business community, and religious and fraternal organizations. Those are sectors that we currently don't have any representation for. Hint, hint, if there's any, you know, business community, law enforcement slash religious fraternal organization people that would be interested in coming to see what we're all about, that would be great. You don't have to fit into a sector, but this is the current makeup of our coalition. So the grant says you have to have at least eight people from these required sectors. There are certain restrictions and requirements for the things that we do. You have to have at least one public awareness campaign. We have to do some direct service, do an environmental campaign. As long as we meet those minimum requirements, then the Coalition can basically take a look at county data and decide what it is that we want to do with that. And that is here, the structured, did I hit you Blaine? Sorry. The structured method for the cooperation and collaboration. So having this group of people from all of these different sectors, they all, you know, they have their own sphere of influence, their own knowledge base, their own community, and so we can all come to the table and do some analysis on what are the needs of our community, what needs are already being met, what resources are out there, are there any gaps that we need to fill, how effective are some of these things? And it makes for really interesting conversation and some really interesting conclusions as we track the data over years. We first received this grant in 2012, which was based on 2010 Healthy Youth Survey data. And as you can see, Oak Harbor area is darker than the rest of the island. Oak Harbor was the highest-risk community in Island County, which is why we were eligible for the grant. I'm skipping around a little. This is this year's data. Oak Harbor is now the lowest-risk community in Island County. This is based on substance consumption rankings. So we're pretty proud of the work that we do. We can't attribute all of this to any one thing, obviously, but when you can track numbers like that over the span of eight years, it's really encouraging because it's hard to measure a lot of this in real time. So the way that we pick our strategies and our programs is that we flag issues that come up on the data that I'll share later, and then we try and attribute a local contributing factor to that. So we'll say, why is this happening here? We live in a military community. Transitions and mobility are an issue. There's a lot of absent parents. There's a lot of kids that have moved 10 times by the time they're a senior in high school. So, you know, that is the kind of thing that is going to impact a child's well-being. And so that's one of the things that we can point to. It's not very scientific when we try to correlate what is causing what, but it's better than doing nothing. So the protective factors that we can put in place as a community, as individuals, as parents, as adults are there on the left. And a lot of it's intuitive. Some not so much, but a lot of it is pretty intuitive. I have a philosophical objection to people that just read the PowerPoint, so that's why I'm not actually just reading the PowerPoint. I'm saying other things, so if you want to stop me and have a question about anything, do that anytime. This is the pyramid. You can turn this upside down and work from the top down or the bottom up. It doesn't really matter. If the end goal is healthy, successful, resilient youth who turn into healthy, successful, resilient adults, then you need to have that foundation. On the right is a list of some of the things that we have done. We do a big booth at National Night Out. Last year was, we gave out locking prescription bags and talked about safe disposal at the police department. They were a fabulous partner. And we've done public awareness campaigns. The city council passed a vaping policy that went a little further than the state law. And so that's what would be considered an environmental strategy. We're changing the environment and the community standards, community expectations. We've got members on the community truancy board. We do tons of trainings for community members, teachers, parents, anyone that deals with kids, and those are all really well-attended. Sorry to, so at the end of our six years of work, this is what that looks like. I apologize that this is difficult to read. So measures of youth delinquency. You can't necessarily see this, but basically there are very few arrests per thousand kids in Oak Harbor. Oak Harbor is the dark red. The light red is other school districts like us. They comp out similar school district. And then the gray is the state average. So in terms of behavior, Oak Harbor kids might be a little more, a little more of a handful than Island County at large, but not as bad as the state average. I can dig into all of this much better. If anybody has questions, I can provide you with the actual data. This is basically telling us, this is the rate of consumption among our kids. That's eighth grade and then 10th grade, the first four eighth grade and the last four are 10th grade. And it goes, it's marijuana, other illegal drug use, current painkiller use, prescription drug use. So those numbers are very low. They're very low, and it's important to frame some of this. When we do Healthy Youth Survey, it's really interesting to see how youth respond. You know, when, we can say that 96% of our students choose not to abuse prescription drugs. 96% of our kids are not doing this. But if you were to ask a teenager, they would say, oh, everybody's doing it. And so that perception is just as important, if not more so, than the reality. So if I were presenting to kids, I wouldn't say, this is how many of you do do this. I would flip that and say, this is, most of you, 87% of you are not choosing to abuse substances. Because that flips the narrative. And it's important, especially for youth, to understand that everybody quote, isn't. More substances. This is alcohol. Alcohol continues to be public enemy number one for youth and adults in terms of long-term health risks. Cigarette smoking, here at the bottom. Our kids are amazing. They are too smart to smoke cigarettes. Was that 5%? That number has gone down in recent years. Significantly down. I think it was something like 17% in 2010, and now it's down to 5. So our kids are fantastic. They're too smart to smoke cigarettes. They know better. And then we get this really cool product on the market, and it is vaping. Some of you have heard of Juul. It's basically flavored, concentrated flavored liquid that you can put in a vaporizing pen and then either blow clouds and clouds and clouds of vapor or virtually nothing, which is why it's really easy to hide and do at school. So this is very concerning that by the time we have a 12th grader, so almost 30% of them are using these vaping products. This is concerning because they were put on the market as a safe alternative to smoking. The kids, I've got a chart that shows what they think is in their products. Most of them think it's just flavored liquid. And because these products are not regulated, they don't know what's in them. Random testing shows that most of them do contain nicotine. It's very insidious that our children might be being addicted to nicotine without their knowledge or consent. And the reason that this data is troubling is because 30% of youth who start vaping will eventually go on to smoke cigarettes. So we're going to be moving backwards. That is what the current data tells us. These products have only been out for a few years, but right now, that's where the trend is going. If a kid that would not be smoking anything normally picks up a vape, eventually the chances are very likely that they will end up being addicted to smoking cigarettes. And that's not a direction that we want to go. Here's a fact sheet. Again, these products are only a few years old, so we haven't really tracked them, but this is what those numbers are doing. Cigarette smoking is going down and vaping is skyrocketing. The Surgeon General has declared this a public health crisis. And again, I applaud the city council for passing that ordinance and thank you too to our city attorney for drafting that fantastic ordinance. At the Washington State Prevention Summit in Yakima in November, we actually got a shout-out during the morning keynote session about passing that ordinance. I'm not sure I ever actually mentioned that to you guys. So thanks, good going. Okay. Risk and protective factors. This is what we look at. We look at risk factors for certain substances. And this is hard to read, but the risk factors that are highlighted for Oak Harbor are parental attitudes, tolerant of substance use, early initiation of drugs, favorable attitudes toward drug use, that can be individual, peer, or community, friends' use of drugs. And then a protective factor is social skills. So that's one of the things that Oak Harbor scored very high on, which you'll see later, and opportunities for pro-social involvement, sense of community, that's all fantastic. And yet, there's this perception here, I'd love to hear from the parents watching. So 47% say that their parents basically don't care if they abuse substances. I'm pretty sure 40%, 47% of parents would not agree with that statement, but that is the perception that kids have. So that, you know, it's not that big of a deal. The community, my parents don't care, the community doesn't care, which is why setting clear standards and modeling healthy behavior is huge in terms of showing our children what it is that we want them to be doing health-wise. These next couple of slides, I apologize, are probably going to be a little difficult for me to get through. This is our mental health, depression and suicidal ideation. And I don't know if you can see this, but the question that is asked, the literal verbiage of the question is, during the past 12 months, did you ever feel so sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that you stopped doing your usual activities? So this isn't a, were you sad, were you depressed, but you know, have you ever been? These are very specific questions that kids answer. And we've got 40% of our 10th graders saying yes to this question, and that is across the city, the county, and the state. That's a devastating number. So we have depression, grade eight, considering suicide, attempted suicide. Depression, considering suicide, attempted suicide, grades eight and 10. This is a sample of 10th grade. These are, this is our depression tracking. It's getting worse. And this is our suicidal ideation and/or attempts. Did you seriously consider attempting suicide? These numbers are going up. That's 2010, for those of you that can't see. And then this is us today. The solid line is Oak Harbor. The dashed line is state. Oak Harbor has always struggled with mental health of our youth, and again, that's one of those things that the Youth Coalition gets together and says, what is going on in this community? Why is this a local issue? What can we do about it? This is across all grades. It's a little easier to see. Our students compared to statewide, you can see that there's definitely a disconnect between what would be considered normal statewide versus what Oak Harbor youth are feeling. Man, I wish these turned out right. So that's what our kids have been up to. I found this as I was going through my notes before. I wanted to talk a little bit about what adults have been up to. So the kids watching, I'm not sure if any youth are tuning in, but they didn't feel like we were being, they were being picked on. So in terms of what adults have been up to, I don't have graphs for this, so I will just say them, I apologize. But an alarming number of our youth are reporting getting in a car and riding with a driver that has either been smoking marijuana or texting. They're not riding with drinking drivers so much. I think on average, that is going down. But they are in the car a lot with a driver who is texting. That number is particularly alarming. And some of that might be other youth, but being young people, I think that as adults, we can probably assume some of that responsibility, that that's behavior that we are modeling. One of the questions on the Healthy Youth Survey, and this is exactly how it's asked to kids, this is a combination of grades. Not counting TV, movies, video games, and sporting events, have you ever seen an adult hit, slap, punch, shove, kick, or otherwise physically hurt another adult more than one time? And between 24 and 34% of our kids said yes. So that's us, setting an example. Another question, has an adult ever physically hurt you on purpose, like pushed, slapped, hit, kicked, or punched you, leaving a mark, bruise, or injury? And these questions are very specific because if you ask a child, well, has an adult ever hit you, they might think of the spanking that they got when they were seven. And so these questions are very specific, and again, between 23 and 28% of our students answered yes. So I think that as adults, we can, we can do better. And we are doing better. These are protective factors. I'm going to email this to everybody so that you guys can see it. If you're looking at this online or on YouTube, it'll show up clearer. Protective factors, opportunities for pro-social involvement, my teachers tell me when I'm doing a good job, I feel like my, this is family decisions. I'm asked my opinion and I participate in family decision-making as a youth. These are very good numbers. The trend is going down a little bit, so this is where parent and caregiver education comes in handy. But overall, we're better than the state average than a lot of other communities when it comes to social and protective factors. I wish that I could read. Do you guys have any, can you actually read this, anybody? You can? Okay, I don't know what it looks like from up there. This is school involvement. This is opportunities for after-school clubs, things like that. 95% say that there are opportunities for this kind of involvement, that they get recognition for performing well, that, you know, the teachers give them positive reinforcement. We're doing much better than the state in this category. Our schools are amazing. And then this is easier to see, this is all grades. Better than the state. Oak Harbor is doing a fantastic job in this arena. So one of the things that's a little difficult to read on the other slide is, is there an adult in the community that I can turn to? There we go. Someone in the community to talk to. These are great numbers, but we can do better than this because the prevention strategy for every, every kind of behavior issue, substance abuse, violence, just mental health, anything, the number-one preventive strategy is a positive, nonjudgmental connection with a non-parent adult. That is the number-one thing that any of us can do to ensure, to give our kids a better chance. And it's that, it's the non-parent adult which is really interesting. I'm very fortunate to be an aunt of two nieces and two nephews, so I try to be that unconditional, nonjudgmental, supportive, non-parent adult. This is why mentoring is so important. Big Brothers, Big Sisters always has a waiting list of lots and lots of kids if anybody has a couple hours a week. This is, the problem with this strategy is that we can only hit one kid at a time, but again, that's better than no kids at a time. So being that person in a community where our youth feel like they have someone that they can go and talk to is huge. I'm going to go back through my notes really quick to see if I missed anything. Chief's battery is high. So again, be that non-parent adult that supports a kid. Set clear standards and model healthy behaviors. I mentioned the vaping policy that the city enacted. I also want to highlight Councilmember Wassinger. Her family manages the local 7-Eleven stores, and they have decided as a business not to sell some of the more sweet, kidsy flavors of vape products. You know, you can get bubble gum and cotton candy and, you know, fruit punch and all this stuff. And obviously, the children aren't, can't go and buy it from a retailer, but somebody is. And so by limiting access to those flavors, you're making it less attractive for kids. Hopefully, less of them will be tempted to ask someone to go and buy that product. So it really can be one person, one family, one business that might be having a huge impact on this issue. So thank you, Erica. I appreciate you putting children over profits. Good for you. We can provide more opportunities for pro-social involvement. We can mentor positive reinforcement, positive reinforcement and recognition. When we compare behavior, when children say that their parents and teachers recognize them when they do well, and that there's, you know, a reward system in place of some kind, doesn't have to be things, it can be recognition, it can just, you know, be positive feedback and positive attention, that those unhealthy behaviors and destructive behaviors go down. It's not difficult. It's slow. It's taken, what, a generation or two for cigarette smoking to become, you know, basically a thing of the past, you know, very small portion of the, of a population smokes. And that's because you don't see ads on TV. You can't smoke in public places. You know, it's taken a generation of that kind of community-level change and environmental change to make a difference. So this isn't fast work, unfortunately. If I could work myself out of a job, I would. But it's not impossible either. The Youth Coalition's vision that we just wrote is healthy youth empowered by community. And healthy implies physically healthy, mentally healthy, spiritually healthy. You know, they're hopeful, they have things to look forward to, healthy in every aspect. And that is accomplished through support of the community, which isn't just the parent's job, it's not just the teacher's job. It's as a community, what kind of standards do we have for our kids? What is expected? What is accepted? What, what are our kids doing right? The Youth Coalition used to do a Caught in the Act Award when a kid was caught doing something constructive or productive or selfless or caring. And we kind of discontinued that because we didn't really like the name, which probably wasn't the best reason for discontinuing something. But looking at the data that recently came out about positive reinforcement, I think that that's something we're going to talk about reinstating because making a big deal whenever a youth, you know, finds a wallet with $800 in it, that's, that's a big deal when they turn that in. So we want to make sure that we are letting our kids know what they're doing right, when they're doing it right. And overall, Oak Harbor, again, the lowest-risk community in Island County in terms of substance misuse and abuse. Our youth are amazing. Some of you have kids, I do not, but I spend time in schools and I roll my eyes when I hear kids today because I think our youth are just fantastic human beings, truly. And so if we can set an example for them, then I think that they will rise to the occasion. The Youth Coalition, I'm sorry I didn't get too much into that, but I thought you'd be more interested in what our community is, is looking like. Our Youth Coalition meets the second Wednesday of every month at the fire station. Thank you, Chief, for letting us use that space. So we're meeting tomorrow, 5:15, and we're actually going to be discussing our strategies and programs that we're going to be implementing starting in the next school year. So it should be an interesting meeting. But you're welcome to come. You can email me, call me, the info below, or use my city email, whatever. You know how to get ahold of me. And I can give you more information. I can email these slides to you, and if anybody has any questions about any particular data set, any substance, any activity, any behavior, I can probably get you recent stats for that. So let me know if there's anything specific that you'd like to know. I know that a lot of this, a lot of this went by really quickly. This is the community page. So yeah, that's basically, that's what I've got. I tried to get through that fairly, oh gosh, not quickly enough, I apologize. So do you have any questions?
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions?
No.
Any questions? Well, congratulations. I certainly did notice the change in the, in the numbers going a positive way since you've taken a hold of that. So congratulations to you, Counselor. We appreciate all of this information, too.
Thank you. It's our volunteers on the Youth Coalition. Let me find them. Sorry, so much information. It just came out in the last month, so I've been eating, breathing, sleeping this information. So this is the Youth Coalition. These are the people that show up every month. These are the people that, you know, help put together trainings and decide what it is we're going to do and pour through hundreds of pages of... is we're going to do and pour through hundreds of pages of graphs and charts, like I just showed you, hundreds of pages. So they are amazing, truly. They're amazing. So, cool.
Thank you.
Let me know if you need anything. Sorry, I timed that for 10 minutes.
No problem. Thank you.
Somebody needs to stop me. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, we will move on to section number three on our agenda, citizen comment period. At this time, citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And we've got, first off, Mr. Chris Anderson has signed up. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Name's Chris Anderson. I live at 2226 Cove Drive in Oak Harbor. Oak Harbor address, it's in the county, but... And just want to share with this, the city, our new project, housing project here in Oak Harbor on the south side of town, just past the bus stop. There's a piece of property there that was annexed in 2011 by the Gentry Group that planned on putting houses in there. Back then, it was, I think it was mandated that the property be developed fairly quickly. And, you know, the recession hit and for whatever reason, the project did not take off back then. Long story short, Steve Waldron of Waldron Construction and I were looking for a small plat to do, a 20-lot subdivision. So, you know, I started looking around. I'm a real estate broker. I own the Century 21 in town. And I found this nice little corner, nine-acre piece. I said, well, that's maybe a little bigger than what we want to buy it off, but let's make an offer on the property and see if it's feasible. So we bought that, did a pre-application meeting for the plat, and we determined, we were informed that, well, this is part of this great big annexation agreement to help, you know, Oak Harbor grow. So we got, oh, okay, well, we can't do just the corner lot? Oh, no, well, you've got to go talk to all of those people and get them all lined up and develop the whole thing at once, have a master plan. So, you know, I think this was in 2014. So I started making phone calls and, you know, some of the people were, you know, had their property under contract and the recession hit and they had to take the property back. So anyways, we reassembled the entire thing, you know, as kind of directed by the planning department, and have designed a project that's much larger than what we wanted to start with. It's now 135 houses over the next five years. The first phase, we'd like to kick off this year. It's 52 houses, two of which are existing, so it's 50 new homes. I gave you guys the plans just so that you wouldn't get blindsided with it once it comes through the planning department. And the planning commission is where it's headed next. So our engineers tell us that we're ready for the planning commission. And we need to get in the newspaper this week in order to make May's planning commission meeting. And that's what I'm asking help for, is getting on the agenda. I'm not sure how to get on the agenda. I've asked a lot of different ways, but we're not getting put on the agenda. So I guess that's all I have, unless you have some questions for me.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We will call for other citizen comments at this time. Any other citizen comments? Okay, seeing none. Counsel, no questions, we'll just move on. The staff. Any comment about the, Mr. Anderson's comments?
If you would like to, I could do it under my item.
Okay, under...
City Administrator's item.
Okay. Okay, that'll be, yeah, good. Okay, we'll do that in a few minutes then. Okay, seeing no other citizen comments at this time, we will move on to the consent agenda. Looks like we have items A through H, and Mayor Protim.
I would like to pull item D, art commission, acorn sculpture, or, no, the sculpture park interlocal, it's E, sorry.
Oh, E, okay.
For E, please.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will consider items A through D and F, G, and H approved as presented at this time. And we will turn back to item number E, arts commission, sculpture park, interlocal agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this question is for our city administrator. It sounds like great addition and stuff. I just didn't know... You said that the price for lease would be anywhere between $5,000 and $20,000?
Not the price for a lease, but the total cost in maintenance and establishing the park. I think there's going to be more cost upfront. Hopefully, we'll offset some of that with donations, but we can't necessarily count that, so that's why I have a variable number there. So the price for probably leasing in is probably somewhere in the $2,000 per year is the preliminary discussion we had on that. That'll be a negotiated item. And I'm including in that, in that $5,000 to $10,000, $5,000 to $20,000 a year cost related to this sculpture park.
Placement of pads for the sculpture. How long would the lease be? I mean, is it like a year lease or is it a 20-year lease? Or, I mean, if you put in the pads and suddenly the school district wants to use it for something, we'll have to remove, I mean, just, I'm just trying to get the big picture here.
I'm ready to answer that question.
Good, thank you.
The leases are, the agreements we'll have with the artist that are putting things there are typically two years. That's their sculpture carts around, and that's the customary amount, and so we'll continue to do that. So we'll have two years. So conceivably, conceptually, this will be negotiated, but my kind of concept now is initially, it's a three-year lease, and then it'll continue to renew. And whenever they want to discontinue it, they have to give us a two-year notice. And then once they give us the two-year notice, then we would start, just let all the exhibit agreements with exhibitors expire, and then the things would go away. So we're hoping this lasts for a long time, but certainly, I think the school district probably wants some flexibility with the property. We don't anticipate that they're, they want anything at this time, and so that's why my preliminary discussion with the superintendent was this is something he felt he could bring forward to his board, and I'm bringing it forward to your board right now. The way this, this just authorized us to start the negotiation on it, and then staff between the two departments would, agencies would come to some kind of agreement and then bring it back to the council and the school board for ratification.
Okay.
And then once we get the agreement to utilize the property, then we would start the, putting the pads on the property, and then we would take over the maintenance, and then everything except for the parcel that's leased to the chamber would be included, is what we're envisioning encompass in that lease.
Okay, so I think past practices with the school district when we were both sort of using the same property was they would do part of the maintenance and we would, it was kind of a joint thing. So this is a new method. If we're leasing this whole thing, then we take over all the maintenance on it? So it's a new method that we would be going into an agreement with them?
Some of the preliminary discussions is, is they don't want it to be any cost to them.
Okay.
So I think they feel like this is a, it's a prime piece of property in a great location, and that's part of the benefits of this, the visibility and the fact that the chamber there adds a lot of synergy to this project. And so we really want to be able to do that and move it forward, but they don't feel it's in their mission like it is in ours to do the art project, so they don't want the cost. So this is all kind of built upon them being a partner and providing the property at a probably below market value to the city to utilize, and then we would incur all the maintenance costs. And then some of the promotion would be, we depend upon the chamber to help us. So it's kind of, it's going to be a three-year, or three advantened partnership to come and make this and promote this sculpture park. And there's a lot of them throughout. There's a smaller one in Anacortes, so there's, I've experienced my previous community to do this, so when this kind of came up, I said, I kind of have some experience in this area. So we've got already four pieces that are kind of ten, ten of these planned to go into that facility, and so, and we would have anywhere from 20 to 30 pieces in that facility. And then there's some exciting benches and some other components that we can put in there and really focus on that park to be art-oriented.
Okay, that sounds good. One more is the senior center has sort of taken over the tennis courts and their pickleball courts. So they will still be able, because that's kind of in the mix of all of this, they would still have use of that, and they would, I guess they maintain it, city being those courts?
Yes, we were fully aware of that, and so that'll actually facilitate, that was kind of done informally.
Right.
So with us having the property on a lease basis, we can, you know, be more reliable, and so we continue to honor that. And there is some other community uses for that property and conceptually, at least for the short term, we'll continue to allow those facilities, and then we'll just work with them, the users, and see whether they want to continue on it. But there, we might come in the middle and take ownership or take lease through an interlocal custody of the property, and then we'll continue to honor the existing agreements at the school district, and then we'll just talk to them on whether they continue on in future years.
Okay, thanks. I just had a few little questions. Thank you. Sounds like a good project.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protim. Yes, Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. Also on page 77 in our packet, there was a question I had because it talks about outlining terms of the lease, including the city administering the existing use agreements on the property and specifically Farmer's Market and Alliance Club Christmas lot. So what is involved in that? Are we then acting in a management capacity for those other venues? Is that what we're looking at moving forward?
Yeah, I think when we talked about this, it just made more sense that just one entity be in charge of that whole property. So that's kind of what I was talking about. We would just take over, and so it'd be our determination whether we wanted to continue that, but the school district needed to know going ahead, and so, and without this being approved yet, I just kind of told them it makes sense for, we'll just honor any agreements that they already have with people for those terms.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, then we'll move forward and consider that approved. Oh, Mayor Protim?
I move that we accept a consent agenda item 4E in our package.
Second. Okay, motion is second to accept consent agenda item 4E, motion by Mayor Protim, second by Counselor Servadius. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We will then move on to Mayor's comments. I have a few things here. I could have done this during our proclamation section, but did want to recognize that there, we've had proclamations in the past, certainly for National Day of Prayer, which was May 2nd. Also, May is National Bike Month. National Bike to School Day is May 8th. That's pretty close to today. That's tomorrow, isn't it? Okay, and National Military Appreciation Month, May is that. And then National Public Works Week is May 19th to the 25th. So I wanted to make sure that we announced that. Also, there is new artwork in our chambers here behind us. When Darcy Truax came to Whidby Island, she felt as if she had come home. Since moving to the island, she was able to attend several local online and mainland art classes. She's always loved art and has a desire to be an artist she did since she was young. She wanted to major in art, but daddy would not pay for college to study art, quote unquote. Consequently, she pursued speech therapy and was able to use her artistic skills in her work. Recently retired from a 39-year profession as a pediatric speech-language pathologist. She is now able to focus on painting and drawing. She loves color and enjoys painting flowers and nature. Her white pin technique is one of her art styles. Besides enjoying painting with watercolors, Darcy enjoys acrylic painting in an intuitive style. So thank you for your art here on display, Darcy Truax. Also wanted to say that last night I was driving through town and I noticed Counselor Servadius with one of our city employees with a power sprayer out spraying a building. I also know that, since I met with him earlier in the day, he traveled down to Seattle that day, and there he was in the evening, working diligently to help clean a building. And I, and I know that Counselor Servadius is on the Main Street Board. He is a director in that organization. They have a spring cleaning set for Saturday, May 18th downtown, and we're all invited. So that starts at 10 o'clock. They're going to have some lunch served that day. It will run from 10 until 4:00. The Main Street group and volunteers will be cleaning windows, so they'll be doing some painting. They'll be planting flowers, picking up some of the trash, and I have participated in that on a couple of years in the past with my weed eater, so I'll be, I'm instructed to bring my weed eater down there, which I will certainly do. And you're all invited, Saturday, May 18th, 10 o'clock, Main Street. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to council member comments. Mayor Protim?
Thank you. Kind of off, city administrator, you were going to make a comment about Mr. Anderson's, about the planning commission and the agenda, I thought. It was skipped over, maybe?
No, I am doing it. My report's mixed up.
Oh, after, oh, sorry, got it. Got it mixed up, sorry. I wanted to do a shout-out. There was a citizen who found my son-in-law's wallet the day of Holland Happening Parade, found a police officer, handed it to them. Someone at the police department put it on Facebook, recognized somehow Beth Muns. And anyway, we were able to go to the police department, they had turned it in. So I want to say thank you to whoever that kind citizen was with all his identification and credit cards in it, that they had turned it in, and the police officer took the time up there, and whoever from the Oak Harbor PD put it on Facebook to try to get the word out. So we had it before, just at the end of the parade, we walked up there and got it. So thank you very, very much. We live in a very blessed community, and it's nice to hear stories like that. So thank you very much.
That's great. Other council comments at this time? Oh, yes, Counselor Hyzen.
Being, was it Public Works Week or something?
Yes.
Like that?
Yes.
Go Public Works. I just want to give a public thank you to all of our Public Works people and to Brett and his team down at the new clean water facility. I know that when they've been trying to bring new technology online, they've been getting a couple of inquiries and putting in, you know, a couple extra minutes a day, or 14 hours, one of the two. So I just, I appreciate their diligence and their dedication. I cannot imagine the number of times they've had to have the same conversation and the hours. I think Brett started at 6:30 this morning, so I just, we have a team full of rock stars and they do that kind of thing every day, and they do it with a smile on their face. So I just, I appreciate everybody who's the face and the voice of the city when people come to them with questions, in addition to, you know, doing their day job. So thank you to all the team that's out and about during all of the things that are going on right now. I know that it's, it's a lot, and everybody's wearing a lot of hats, and I just appreciate all of you.
Well said. Great. Anyone else? City council comments? Okay, we'll go to our city administrator.
Okay, just to kind of update you on the project for the Village of Gary Oaks subdivision project, the city... project, the city's engineer, Jim Bridges, has been in pretty much constant contact and communication with the agent engineer, Dave Lyric, on the project. So we've had a lot of communication with him. Given the timing and their submittal of this last submittal, the earliest that staff can put this on the agenda, assuming that it's a complete package, is June, is the June Plan Commission. So we can't make the May. There's just too many things to do. That's the best case scenario, assuming that we can work through all the issues and that there's nothing that we need to work through. But I think there's a few areas that we still need to work through. I know staff and the mayor are committed to meet with the applicant and to continue to help them to move the project along. So I think we're committed to provide some focused help to them. So they can, I know there's a complicated project, Stormwater, we've talked about that, then PDS and some of the things that we have to do with DOE regulations. And it's challenging for projects. And so certainly we'll try to provide focused help to, to get this project to move along. And then if you have any additional questions, I could provide some follow-up information to you.
Thank you.
I just have a, I just have a quick question, if you don't mind. Once, once, is there, is there any way that we can work with the applicant to make it so that we're not having this dead month? There's, there's a long route to go, I know. You know, I just hate to see another month. I know this project's been going back and forth and staff has worked very diligently on, on trying to get it moving forward for, for several months now. And, you know, I know they're heading into prime construction season, especially for their dirt work, some of the stuff to get the initial dirt work done. It's going to be imperative to get done this summer. You know, doing some of that stuff during the middle of December just isn't going to fly. So is there any, any, any gaps? Or I guess, I'm not going to ask you the question. I guess I'm going to make the statement. If there's any gaps or any way that we can work with the applicant to, to make it so that this, this month of waiting for the public notice and getting on the next agenda, any way we can get ahead of the game, you know, hopefully, and I'm sure that staff will continue to do that. I know they've been working hard on it.
Yeah, we would really like to see the project move forward for review by the planning commission and the, and the council.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments then at this time?
No, no other comments.
Okay. We will then move on to our public hearings and meetings. We have an ordinance, an interlocal agreement, and an authorization item yet to take care of. Under public hearings and meetings, if you would like to speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting, please sign in. But if you don't, you'll still have an opportunity to ensure comments are recorded properly. Please state your name clearly into the microphone. Please submit, or please limit comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. And we are on 6A, ordinance number 1875, amending Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 3.56, entitled Gambling Tax. And we have our city attorney, Nikki Sparza.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. So back in February at your workshop, we started talking about whether or not the city council was interested in raising our gambling tax rates. We're significantly under what the state allows us to collect. And so we started having that conversation back in February. At the February workshop, you asked us to go back and look at what surrounding communities were, at what rates they were taxing. And we did that. We came back at your March workshop and had further conversations about where the council wanted to go. What I heard at that time was that there was interest in going to 5% on raffles, including raffles. We didn't include that before. We had just bingo. And going to 5% on social card games, we weren't taxing before. And then upping our tax on punch boards and pull tabs to 2%. I also heard that there was interest in exempting charitable organizations. And so this particular ordinance that I brought forward this evening sets the tax rate at 5% for bingo, for raffles, and for social card games, and increases punch boards and pull tabs to 2%, and exempts charitable organizations from tax. So staff recommends adoption of ordinance 1875 after conducting a public hearing.
Okay, so I will now open up that public hearing and give, this is an opportunity to ask questions or, or make a statement. Yes, Mr. Reedy?
Hi, I'm Mike Reedy. I'm the manager of the Oak Bowl Card Room. As far as I'm concerned, I think I'm the only social card game in Oak Harbor. So we're talking about my room. We're barely open. Last month, our gross was $1,003. So you're talking 5% of $1,000. We're talking 50 bucks. The month before that was like 1,100. We're not talking about a whole lot of money. But after we pay the wages of just me at minimum wage, the, the card room breaks even at best. The only reason it's there is to sell alcohol, food, pizza, pull tabs, which will become less lucrative if you go to 2%. There's not much margin there by the time you pay all the employees. It looks like a lot of money, but by the time you pay wages and how, you know, 6, 65 to 70% of the money that goes in is paid back to the player. So there isn't a whole lot of profit margin there and you're cutting into it. But as far as the card room goes, it'd probably be a game over for me. I've been doing it for 38 years. It's more like an adult night care. That's what I call it. I mean, most of the people are 50 plus. They come in for two hours a night, four nights a week to play a little cards. And we play the smallest limits in the state. I mean, I heard big money. I think Joel said in the paper it was big money. We play the smallest limit. There's not a game smaller in the entire state than what we play. So I hope that you say no on it. At least think about it. It's not a whole lot of money, but it's a job for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, let's bring Nikki back and open it up to City Council. Councilor Almberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Sparza, can you refresh my memory on why we're even considering this? What really got this action going?
It was one of my office's code reviews that determined that there was room to grow if council wished to do that. It was just something that we hadn't adequately addressed in the code. We were only taxing two of the five gambling activities allowed under state law. And so our office brought it forward to determine council's interest.
Did we do any type of calculus on what it really means in terms of revenue collection? I mean, are we, are we chasing pocket change? Or are we actually paying for our efforts to even go through the process of changing the ordinance?
We did a calculation. I don't have the numbers in front of me. But we did present those numbers at the February workshop as to the amount that it generated every year.
I don't remember that. I'm sorry. Does anybody have that approximate, that number?
I'm thinking somewhere in the 30,000 annually. Annually.
Before or after? Sorry.
The paper stated 9,000 for pull tabs, what was in the paper.
And I'm, I don't remember what the numbers were.
I, I, I don't remember that. I'm just wondering if we're chasing a little horse or a big horse. And I hate to go through a process of chasing a little horse that doesn't amount to much when it costs us more than what it's really worth to make the change. So currently, we collect about 30,000 on gambling tax.
I believe that's my guess, guesstimate from my recollection, so.
Yes, Councilor Servadius.
Thank you, Mr. Reedy. I appreciate you showing up and commenting. And obviously, when we put an ordinance like this in place, it's not just any one business. It's looking at the bigger picture. And I happen to have known the owners of the Bayside Lounge, which later became The Element. And while yours may be a very small, by your description, a very small social card game, there have been other card games in those establishments in town that have very high gross margins. And so it's not, obviously, this isn't intended towards your business in general, although it will affect your business if we pass this. To me, it's one of those areas and ordinances that I would like to be a little more proactive rather than reactive, when all of a sudden we have, if we have these businesses in town, and then we go back and try and pass this ordinance, that's even more onerous, I think, than trying to be ahead of it if other cities, and we compared ourselves to other cities that may be doing this. So that's the reason I spoke up on it and the reason that I made the specific statement that it is a very, it can be a lucrative business.
Most card rooms now?
Point of, point of order.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't, don't have generally a dialogue back and forth, so.
Right. So I just wanted to address that. I do appreciate you coming forward and, you know, with those numbers you, you mentioned 1,003 and 1,100. I don't know if that is a deal breaker for, for your social card games. I would still support this only because of the, well, for all the aforementioned reasons, but Stromberg as well, that we've gone through in the different, we covered it in the workshop, is trying to be proactive, become, I guess comparable to our peers as far as taxing these different activities at different levels. And I know we went back and forth on what's the right amount. I think the card games could go as high as 20. Is that what it was? And we settled on five, which I'm fine with that. It's, it's not a big moneymaker for the city. That's not the point. It's having a proactive ordinance if these businesses wanted to come to town. That's all. Thank you.
Other, Councilor Hyzen?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have the same question as Councilmember Almberg. I wasn't at the February workshop, so that's my bad. But I, I'm curious as to the before and after in terms of revenue and what this actually means in terms of real money. I appreciate being proactive and not, and looking ahead and cleaning up our code, which desperately needs to be done. And it's a lot of work for legal, I know that. And, and, you know, something might look really good on paper. Say, oh, well, we could be taxing five of these instead of two. And we could be charging, you know, 20, but we're only charging five. And so on, on paper, some of this stuff looks really good, Mr. Reedy. And so thank you for being the face of, of what that translates to in terms of, of the human element. So it's really important that we have both sides of that. You know, is, is something like this going to generate enough revenue to make it basically worth everybody's, everybody's time and effort? And, and will there be equity? So I, I am not opposed to revising our, our ordinance at all. Personally, I want to go back and watch the workshop and actually see the numbers so that I know what this means in terms of actual real dollars from real people. So tonight, I would not support passing this. But I, I want to go back and watch the video of the workshop and refresh my memory of all of the numbers. I watched it ages ago, but I don't remember what it is. So yeah, I'm going to decline tonight. But I wouldn't be opposed to revisiting this at our next meeting, for example.
Councilor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. When this was first brought to our attention, again, it was part of a greater effort to clean up our code and bring things current. And I have fully supported all of that. It was first brought to our attention that what our limits were and what we could possibly do. And I was very much against that. And the, the thinking behind that seemed to be, well, because we can. And I understand about being proactive, but there's a, there's a point where we have to say, where are we tipping the scale? And are we making a lot more money? We're making a little bit more? And what is the cost? Because if we drive these businesses out of our city, then being proactive to be ready for any great infusion of such businesses in the future is because we're not going to attract them with the higher tax rate. And we may just, in the process, drive those out that are already here. I would also like the numbers because I recall it being not a lot. And again, I wasn't in favor of pushing this to the maximum. I was part of the discussion. I got these numbers where they are now. But I've never been resolutely for adding another tax just because we can. So as for me, for tonight, I also will not be able to support this measure. Thank you.
Would you like the numbers? Okay. So for 2017, the punch boards and pull tabs were 8,482. 2016, 11,455. And we projected for 19, 12,000, 12,000, and then the next year, 12,240 for 2020. For bingo, it was 951 in 2017, 954 in 16. And then we projected 12, 1,200 and 1224, 19 and 20 respectively.
950 what?
951, $951.
$951 for the year?
Yeah, in 17. 16 was 954. And then we projected 1,200 for 2019 and 1224 for 2020. So total of about 10 in 17.
And we didn't, we're not, the proposal here is not increasing the tax for bingo. It's doubling at the one for punch card. And then we don't have any history for raffles or social cards because we never taxed those before.
Councilor Hyzen?
Sorry, I don't remember whose turn it is. Patricia, do the projections for this year in 2020 and 21, do those include the proposed rate? So that's as they stand?
That's as they stand, just anticipating growth.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
This is for our attorney, please. I'm sorry, I don't remember how we came up. I remember the pull tabs and the bingo, but the 5% for raffle and card games, was that just keeping it even with the bingo? I also remember the discussion about not going up the 20% and whatever. If we wanted to, we could back it to like 3% for bingo, raffle, card games, and leave the, the punch board and pull tabs at 2? I mean, there's got to be a balance between updating because we have been caught in sometimes with a business coming in and we had not anything on the books. And your staff and time is money and energy and not just to slop it and not do anything with it. But we could bring percents down? Or was there a particular reason why you picked 5? I, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
So the 5% is what currently exists in the code for bingo.
Okay.
The raffles, that was something we hadn't taxed before. Those two are, are considered under the same scheme in, under state law. And those two things you can go up to 10% on. And so the, essentially, that was a result of the conversations with council during those two workshops, was that, that the desire was to keep it lower.
Okay. So if we wanted to, all the good work and keeping proactive, we have 5% for bingo now. We could keep the punch board pulled as what you've recommended. But raffle and social games, we could take down to 2 or 3%, yet we still are proactive in our ordinance. But yet we're not jacking it up as a compromise between, I, I'm just throwing it out, that would be possible if we so made the motion to do that.
It, it's a policy called council, it's council's discretion as to what you'd like to see.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out for my other council members. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilor Wiener.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Sparza, aside from maximizing the, the revenue for the, the city through some tax adjustments within this, this code changes, and through that adding the language for the exemption for the nonprofits, is there anything else we're the nonprofits, is there anything else we're cleaning up within this dis- ordinance?
No, that's, anything else is essentially spelling things out that, creating consistency in the code, adding an, or her, instead of filing his, you know, things that.
So, no real major changes, just clerical kind of corrections?
Correct. And cleaning up the penalty section to reflect class one infraction as opposed to this random $300 fine, which is consistent with the rest of our code.
And if it wasn't for the fact that we were adding the raffle tax, we wouldn't be making a lot of the reference changes to the exemption for nonprofits. I mean, between the raffle tax and the social card tax, that's really what we were trying to cover because the additions of those tax to make sure we exempted those organizations?
So, the code originally had an exemption for charitable organizations that make less than 5,000 a year. What I heard when we were having the conversation is that there was interest in having an across-the-board exemption without that $5,000 limit.
But that would have been only for bingo under the current code. Bingo and pull tab, I don't know that nonprofits do any pull tabs in town.
Right.
Okay, and, so, but aside from the percentages where we're going to be looking at additional taxes for raffle and social cards, we are looking at a doubling the current pull tab tax, which would take Patricia's figures roughly from 12,000 a year to 24,000 a year.
Potentially.
Potentially. And that additional $12,000 worth of revenue would be basically coming out of the bottom line of those eight or nine businesses in town. I think that's what the number we came up with that are selling pull tabs presently.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, input?
What question?
Counselor Almberg.
You know, the, these numbers that we have do not come up to $30,000. That, this is, and I'm not criticizing, I know you're trying to recall what the numbers were, but they are pretty insignificant in the course of the city business activities. I believe that these activities are adjunct to an existing business. Like Mr. Reedy said, you know, people buy other products in their store or their business or their restaurant, whatever it is. Now, people can also go off the island to the casinos, et cetera. And if we really believe that we're going to support our own local businesses, why are we going to shoot them in the foot and say, we need more money just because we need more money for gambling? I'm not going to support it for that reason.
Counselor Cervantes.
So, I'm just listening and wondering, we sent staff, we had two workshops. And if you're not able to attend the workshop, I would hope that people would watch the video so that we don't have to have the discussion several times and have staff, we send them out to do work. They do the work we tell them to do. So, I'd just be curious, if we don't pass this, unless we want to revisit the percentages, what do we do with the rest of the work that staff has done here in cleaning up the languages?
Counselor Almberg.
You know, I, actually, I would like to, thanks for bringing that up. I would support the administrative changes that you made in there. I've been specifically talking about the tax increase. I recognize that there's some language that has to be cleaned up. So, I could support, I could support the changes without the increase in the taxes.
Counselor Heisen.
I'm in a rare position where I agree with everybody. Everybody at the dais. I feel Joel, when he's, you know, will ask staff to do something, they'll do it and they'll bring it back and we'll be like, well, we don't like that. And so, staff's wondering why we asked them to do that. I'm sure that that's baffling sometimes. So, clearly, looking over the red line version of this code, it needs to be cleaned up. We can't just decide to wash our hands of it tonight. Something needs to happen with this, and they've done good work. I would definitely, I would support taxing all the entities as, in terms of the number of entities that we are able to tax or the activities, but maybe not at such a high rate. You know, to go from nothing to 5% is, you know, when you're dealing with $1,000, that's significant to an individual. So, I would not be opposed, I would not be opposed to this if we kind of revisited the actual rate structure, because this does need to be updated desperately. But at the current rates, I still don't think I can support it. Thank you, Patricia, for getting us the numbers. I appreciate that.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will support fixing and cleaning up the language without the tax increases. And I would like to state that I believe this was staff initiated and brought to us at that workshop. And again, which I applaud staff for doing, for looking at ways to improve and increase revenue and improve our ordinances. But I don't believe that, as a council member, I asked them to raise taxes for us at this point. And so, again, I'm not going to support that, but I will support changing the language and here to clean up the code. Thank you.
Mayor Proten.
Is, are there any other comments? I'm willing to make a motion. I move that we accept the cleaned-up gambling tax ordinance. We leave bingo as it has been. The pool punch tabs, we leave as 1%. Raffles will be 1%, and social card games will be 1%. So, we've cleaned it up. We're on, we're collecting just a little bit, but we're putting everything into action. And it can be changed or tweaked later on.
Second. Motion, two seconds. The motion is to accept the ordinance as presented, and, help me here, Carla.
She's still in. Administrative gambling tax.
I think really the motion is a motion to amend the ordinance to reflect changes to raffles and social card games at 1%.
And keep punch pull tabs at 1%. And bingo has been at 5%, so we're just going to leave it as it is. Except all the new language, the cleanup, his and hers and all of that.
So, we have a motion, we have two seconds. And Counselor Cervantes.
I think staff has gotten a fairly clear indication for a third time of how they think we feel. So, I would suggest we vote, I'm going to vote that motion down. Table it or let them just, or actually take no action at this time, is what I would suggest. Let them bring it back clean so we're all looking at the same thing with no discrepancies, and then we could vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay, so, we still have a motion in two seconds to vote on. Any other input or questions? Are you prepared to vote on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So, I think we have four. I think we have three ayes. We have three. Will you raise your hands, the ayes, all in favor?
I voted for the motion.
Sorry, I have a point of order.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I need clarification as to what just happened. I'm not, I don't think you can vote against your own motion. So, I want to make sure we're all on the same page about what just happened. I just, can you?
I'm not sure what just happened. I can't.
Yeah, I'm not. Because the motion was to clean, clean it up and change, and just change the, add the raffles card games and change it from 5% to 1%. So, effectively, we're cleaning it up and taxing raffles and card games at 1%. That's all that's changing.
That's right.
I'm okay with that.
That was the motion.
That was the motion. Right. But can, hang on. We might need a recess. I'm.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who voted what way here, so.
Mayor.
Yes.
The question, the point of order that was made is, can you vote against a motion that you have made?
I think you can vote against a motion that you have made.
So, the point of order was, can you vote against a motion that you made? And the answer to that is yes.
Is yes.
You can vote against a motion.
The motion that you've made.
Okay. So, make sure we've got the record correct.
I think the motion is dead.
No, the motion's dead.
Okay, okay, that's what I think too.
So, what I'm hearing is.
It failed four to three, correct?
And so, what I'm.
Yes.
What I'm hearing is that staff would like this to come back on the consent agenda, reflecting 1% across the board with the exception of the 5% and all the other administrative changes. That's what I'm hearing. And so, that is the direction staff will take unless the mayor directs otherwise.
But that's the same as the motion.
Right, but I hear that the motion is, that we're not amending it from the dais. We're going to have staff go back and fix it and put it on a consent agenda.
Okay. Okay. The mayor's not going to redirect you any.
Yes, sir.
I know you know what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I followed all of that.
So, they're going to go do exactly what we just voted against, having them, okay, sure.
Okay. Well, we will move on now to, we have our police chief coming to the podium, and we are on to item number 8A. Interlocal agreement, acceptance of Washington State Military Department Homeland Security Grant E-19-199. Chief Dresker.
Mayor and council members, thank you. I'm a little tired after that last one, but I'm going to give this a try.
Yeah.
I think mine's relatively simple, so basically, I'll read you the recommended action. The recommended action is for the mayor to, or I'm sorry, for council to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement accepting the Washington State Military Department Homeland Security Grant Award for the City of Oak Harbor in the amount of $28,808. I believe you've all received a packet on this. So, basically, this is a, what we call a Stone Garden Grant. This, Oak Harbor has participated in this for many years. There's actually a cycle thing that goes on where they kind of overlap. In essence, this is consistent with other federal grants that the county becomes the administrator of the grant, and then they have what they call friendlies or partners, which is what we are. So, our amount for the grant is listed there. The total amount would be $28,808. And I think you understand, and this says the award period is September 1st of 2018 to July of 2021, so it's kind of a three-year period. And it just takes that long from, since it was September, for us to get all the paperwork and figure things out. So, there's a certain amount allocated federally. It goes to states, to the local jurisdictions, to counties, and then down. So, this is the amount that we'd be looking at, which covers overtime, some equipment. In fact, one of the last ones, we purchased a tri-band radio for our operations captains in the rig, so it helped us quite a bit with some cost savings there. Kind of other than that, though, which is equipment that we can use towards this grant program, the money really goes towards paying the overtime for the officers to go out and perform the mission that is covered within the dictates or mandates of the Stone Garden Rather than reading all this, since you all have, and you're probably familiar with Stone Garden Grant since you've done this before, I'm open to questions if you have any.
Okay, before we bring it to staff, see if anybody from here, from the public, has any input or questions regarding this item? Okay, seeing none? Yes, Counselor Cervantes.
There's no comments. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement, accepting the Washington State Military Department Homeland Security Grant Award for the City of Oak Harbor Police Department in the amount of $28,808.12.
Second.
So, we've got a motion that reads exactly like the recommended action in our packets. A motion by Counselor Cervantes, second by Counselor Wassinger. Any other input or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. That was a lot smoother. Thank you, chief. We will move on then to our last item of the evening, which is 9A, Authorization to Submit Connection Fee and Rate Proposal to Navy for Treating Wastewater from the Seaplane Base. And we have our own engineer, Brett Harbison.
As the title says, we are contemplating a Navy connection to our clean water facility and the cost analysis associated with that. To give some background, the Navy requested a cost analysis to connect to our clean water facility, the cost to construct and maintain conveyance between the seaplane base and the clean water facility, which I'll give some more details in a minute, and a cost to treat the Navy's wastewater flows. As part of this, we retained HGR to perform the financial analysis, and Corolla was the subcontractor to HGR to help us with some of the technical issues because they're familiar with our treatment plan. Sean Corn is here tonight to help us with that, and he'll be presenting the study in a few minutes. But I'll give you a little bit of overview on this. This is our city looking on the east side. The facilities we're talking about are our brand-new clean water facility. We're just now facing up, it is going into, is in operation. They would be looking to discharge that facility, but right now, they discharge to the old lagoon system that we were in till last December. Part of the analysis is looking at bringing that, oh, oh, over here, sorry.
I was doing that.
Thanks. Part of the analysis is bringing the flow from the Navy facilities over to our clean water facility. And they have basically three main areas to deal with. One is Cape Park Housing up here, Victory Housing, which is right here by Regatta, and the seaplane base and Mailer Housing, which is down here. Currently, Cape Park comes down to the lagoon via a pipeline right here. We looked at a couple options, and the Navy expressed a preference for us to intercept the flow here and pump it around down to here. Victory Housing actually flows by gravity to here, and Seaplane Base has, already has a pump station here. So, what will be happening is we'd be going back to our existing force main, which up till last December, we pumped over to the lagoon, and that pipe is still there. And we would use that pipe to convey the flow back down Pioneer, down to about Midway. Then from Midway, we would have to build some new line down to the clean water facility. So, it does allow us to reuse some line and also allows us to avoid digging longer waterfront and avoiding a lot of archaeology. One thing I want to make clear is this, these facilities in green provide no benefit to the city. So, we would, other than the Navy services, that's entirely their system. The part that we'd be reusing, we still don't have any service on. So, the collection system and the conveyance system that we're talking about is entirely a Navy's use. So, anyway, Sean is going to start talking a bit more about the details of the cost analysis.
Thank you, Brett. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to be back here in front of you. As Brett mentioned, I'll be walking you through the financial analysis that we put together to review and develop a rate and a buy-in charge for the Navy. And so, as we go through this, what the Navy has requested is the cost associated with connecting to the system. And there's two pieces to that. There is that connection component, which is the capacity that the Navy would be using at the existing clean water facility, the existing capacity of the city's own collection system. So, essentially, to get it from that point that Brett showed you at the edge of the seaplane base to the clean water facility. Then there's also the O&amp;M side of this, or the wastewater rate that the Navy would need to pay to recover the cost of O&amp;M to provide that service. So, we have two distinct components here that we're looking at. As part of the information that the Navy requested, we also had to split that up a little bit more as well. So, when we think about the rate analysis, the Navy has requested components where the city maintains and operates that conveyance system on Navy property. So, the green line that Brett just showed you, the Navy, or the city would maintain and operate that as an alternative. The other alternative is the Navy would maintain and operate that. So, we've got two different sets of costs because if the city has to maintain and operate, that's a cost to the city that would be then passed on to the Navy to operate. On the buy-in fee or that capital capacity component, they have also requested an alternative. One is an upfront payment, so similar to what new customers pay today in SDC to connect to the system, very similar approach. They have also requested an. They have also requested an amortized approach to that, where we would spread that cost over 20 years. So we've developed all these different components for your consideration as we move forward to discuss this with the Navy. So I'll start out with the rate analysis. We've gone back and developed this based on generally accepted methodologies. We have a manual that talks about how you develop these studies and how you develop, uh, the actual rate for the Navy versus the city's component. So we've developed this based on the current O&amp;M and capital needs of the system, and we want to make sure that we have an equitable allocation of those costs between the two systems. And when I talk about the two systems, it's the city and the Navy is coming and funding these costs. We did need to include, uh, additional O&amp;M as part of this. When we talked about the city maintaining and operating versus the Navy, the city will incur additional costs. In addition, the city will incur additional costs by providing these services just through the existing collection system. So there's gonna be more maintenance, O&amp;M, on that short piece of the collection system that will need to be funded as well as we go through this. So we developed the cost of service back in the prior rate studies that we've done for the city, and we've utilized that and adapted that to meet this need as we've moved forward. So our starting point was the 2019 and 2020 budgets. As I spoke about, we added additional O&amp;M cost to this. It was the collection system O&amp;M. It was treatment cost, so we have current costs today to treat the wastewater, but we're gonna have more volume, so we will incur additional costs as part of that. And then we also have, uh, capital improvements, and part of that is how we fund, or how the Navy pays for that green line to get it to the city's component. So right now, we have included that as part of the wastewater rate, that the city would fund that, and then the Navy would be paying that through an annual O&amp;M rate as part of that. And then there's also a replacement of existing facility, so there's a renewal and replacement aspect of maintaining the clean water facility as well as some of the existing collection system pipe that will need to be replaced at some point in the future. So we developed this based on that analysis and the current costs that we have today. So once we have those costs, then we allocate those costs. And really, our goal here is to come back with an equitable proportional allocation of those costs between the city and the Navy to develop those funding needs for the Navy. And we go through this in a three-step process. We functionalize the costs. This is the city's accounting approach, so we know what our treatment costs are, our collection costs are, our lift station costs. We have all those costs split out. But then we look at how we classify them, or why do we incur this cost? And this is where it varies on the wastewater side, is we may incur costs just to get the wastewater from point A to point B. So from that collection point on the city system, from the seaplane base to the clean water facility, that's a volume-related cost. But at the treatment plant, we have to clean that wastewater, and the strength of that wastewater matters. So we've gone through and looked at what are the typical volumes that we're gonna receive from the Navy, and what is the strength of that wastewater, so how hard is that to treat, and what would be the costs associated with that? So we've gone through, based on the current costs, the additional costs that would be incurred, uh, and our methodology is outlined in the WEF Manual Practice 27 to come back and determine what those costs will be. So here on this page, we have a quick summary of what, how we allocated different costs, because it splits up slightly differently. There's some costs that we allocate proportionally, or we can say that the city customers and the Navy both benefit from this cost. Best example is the wastewater treatment O&amp;M. So that is a cost that is incurred to treat that wastewater, and each, the city and the Navy are allocated a cost proportionally based on their volume and strength of their wastewater. Some of the other costs, the sewer reclaimed water, that is the collection system. We're only allocating the Navy a very small portion of the collection system. The reason for that is when you look at the amount of the collection system they utilize, it's very small. Think from the edge of the seaplane base gate to the clean water facility versus all the collection system here in the rest of the city. They don't benefit from those costs. So we're only allocating them a portion of that collection system. Uh, additional O&amp;M is a direct cost to the Navy, so any additional collection system or conveyance system O&amp;M, that is a cost that the Navy would pay for as part of this. The Navy would also pay their share of state and city taxes, so that goes on top of the bill at the end of that, where we include those two components. They also share in the rate-funded capital proportionally, and then they are not allocated the treatment debt. So the existing debt service on the books that is being paid right now by your customers to fund the clean water facility, they would not be allocated under this approach. And the reason for that is that they would buy a full, pay for a full buy-in to the system. So that's part two, where they pay for that capital and capacity component, then they would not pay the debt on the system because they're providing that cost of that capital today to you immediately at a one-time or possibly over an amortized component. The collection debt is that additional debt to fund that green line. So that would be directly assigned to the Navy. So when we look at this on real dollars, then this is that same chart with the, the dollars added to it. This is the assumption that the Navy maintains and operates the conveyance system on Navy property. So this is where the city would only incur minor additional costs. So, on the collection system, and these are in thousands, the total cost to the city for the collection system O&amp;M budget is 1.2 million. The Navy's allocated 25,000 of that. On the treatment plant, they're allocated 582,000 of the 3.2 million dollars. They are allocated the additional full O&amp;M, the 10,000, and then they pay their share of the, the state and city. It comes back down here, we've added it down here. This is the existing city and state tax component. And then we have a small portion of rate-funded capital, that's the renewal and replacement of the existing facilities that the Navy would benefit from. And then they do not, they are not allocated any of the treatment-related debt, but they are allocated 1.4 million of the collection debt to fund that conveyance system from Cape Park basically all the way back here to the seaplane base gate. So in total, they're allocated 2.2, almost 2.2 million dollars under this approach, where they maintain and operate the conveyance on the Navy property. We add 168,000 for state and city taxes for a total of 2.35 million dollars. That would be the annual amount of revenue that the city would recover from the Navy under this scenario. Same approach if the city maintains and operates. The only number that changes on this sheet is the additional O&amp;M, 355,000 instead of the 10,000 dollars. So that's the additional time and effort for city staff to go out and maintain that conveyance system as part of this process. So we allocate a total of 2.5 million. We add a state and city taxes, so again, a little higher number because it's on a percentage of the total, and we have 2.725 million dollars in annual operating revenue that needs to be recovered from the Navy. So as we've gone through this to develop it, the allocation is based on generally accepted methodologies and approaches. Again, based on the request from the Navy, we've come back and developed two alternatives for them. They range from 2.3 million to 2.7 million roughly, based on that. As we go forward and negotiate and discuss with the Navy, the contract would outline how this would be collected. So this is just a total annual amount in today's dollars based on what we know today. Uh, as those costs change, or something changes as we move forward, those would need to be reflected into this analysis from the O&amp;M side. Uh, but that revenue could be collected in different manners, just like we do on the wastewater rates for the city's customers. There could be a fixed component, there could be a volume component, there's a mixture of how we could design that component as, as this moves forward. So once we know the overall O&amp;M piece, the second step was to come back and develop this buy-in charge. And really, this buy-in charge provides equity between new and existing customers. And so it really comes back to that equitable share of the value of the system capacity. So, right now, the city has built the clean water facility. There's available capacity that your customers today are paying for. So all the city wastewater customers have been paying that debt service for eight-plus years now, I think. And so that has been available for somebody to use right now planned for city growth, consumption going forward. So this charge would reflect the value of that capacity based on the cost that the city incurred to build that capacity. And really, what this does is it protects existing customers from having to pay for that capacity twice. So if there were no charge for this type of connection, then the city customers have been paying for this overall capacity, and they'd have to pay again at some point in the future when the plant would be expanded. That's the whole goal of these fees, is to maintain equity between a new customer and an old customer who's been paying for those facilities. So it's only based on new customer demand for all those new customers that need to co, connect to the system. And again, it's based on the value of that capacity, and I'll show you on the next slide how that comes into play. It is not O&amp;M expense. That's why we have the wastewater rate, the first part we talked about. That picks up the O&amp;M side. This really just comes back to the capacity available and what that is valued at today. There's three basic methodologies, the buy-in, the growth expansion, and the combined. We are focused on the buy-in component, and the reason for that is that there, the city has available capacity today to serve the Navy, and that reflects that theory of the value that it is today. If there were no capacity today and you had to expand the plant to meet their needs, then we would do a combined method as an example. But since there is available capacity, then we're using that buy-in approach that reflects the value of that capacity. So I apologize, these numbers are a little small here, but, uh, what this shows is we worked with Corolla to go through and look at the cost of the major functions of the clean water facility. So this is treatment only, that's all we're dealing with here is the clean water facility. And so we want to come back and base this on what that cost is. So, we split into different categories: headworks, aeration basin, membrane system, equalization basin, sludge handling, and admin and common. So those are the primary components that we're able to separate out as, on a functional basis. We then look at why we built the plant the way we did. So, for headworks, it's based on peak hour flow. How much wastewater can get into the front end of that plant? That's what that's designed around. When we take a look at the membrane system, it's based on the capacity that is available to be treated at that point in time. So we take that design criteria, what that was built for today, and we compare that to what the Navy's flow is that would be, is estimated to be on the system. So, as an example, the headworks is designed to meet a peak hour flow of 11.4 MGD, million gallons per day. The Navy impact is 3 MGD. So they are 26.3% of the capacity of the headworks. We do that for each of the components to determine what share of the, is the Navy of the overall capacity, and that's either based on, uh, million gallons a day, pounds per day, that's the strength component, how nasty is that wastewater, how hard is that to treat? Minutes, duration, uh, and, and total as we go through each of those. So those are the characteristics that we use to design this. We then can convert that to the dollars. So when we look at the headworks, it is, the cost to build that component was about 17 and a half million dollars. So of that 17 and a half million, that 26.3 up here makes its way down here, and 4.6 million is the value of the capacity that the Navy would utilize in the system. And we've done that for each of these components. So in total, when we come down, we have all of our total costs. Uh, I will say also, we have admin and common facilities. Those costs are only the costs, admin and common costs related to the clean water facility. It does not include windjammer or other costs, that is the actual treatment component of those costs. So, in total, approximately 26 million dollars is being allocated, or is the value of the capacity that the Navy will utilize of the clean water facility. We do add in, in this discussion, a total, a latecomers fee of 1.5 times that. Again, this is really there to reflect the value of what the city's customers have been paying for the last eight-plus years on the system, so it's not just the value of the capacity. There's also other costs that have been paid for over time that have not been paid by the Navy. So we've included that latecomers fee as part of that. So it would be a total buy-in fee of approximately 38 million dollars for the Navy to connect on the capacity side of the system. That's that one-time payment to buy into the system today, so very similar to other retail customers. So your residential and commercial customers paying a system development charge or SDC. Same theory and approach, just on a much larger scale. Uh, based on the alternatives the Navy requested, uh, the top red box is that current number, the one-time payment. The second alternative is amortized over 20 years, so we take that 38 million, we amortize that over 20 years at 4.5% interest. That 4.5% interest reflects the current cost of a 20-year municipal revenue bond. So we tied it back to essentially how the city, or what this cost is that the city would incur to borrow for that same, uh, cost. And that works out to be 2.2, I can't read even my number up there, I apologize, 2.6 or 2.8 million dollars per year for 20 years from the Navy. So as we've gone through this, that buy-in charge includes only the treatment cost. There's no collection or conveyance component to this. Uh, the amortized over 20 years, and it reflects the value of that cost of the capacity that is needed by the Navy. Uh, the one piece that this does not include is that this does speed up the need for the city to expand the clean water facility sooner than what was planned. So, right now, the capacity that's available in this, in the clean water facility was planned for the city's growth. A good chunk of that will be taken by the Navy should they connect to the system. So, additional work will need to be done on the membrane expansion and the aeration basin capacity to expand that for future growth by the city, uh, at the clean water facility. So with that, uh, I'm gonna let Brett finish up a couple slides, and then we'll be available for questions.
Uh, so, uh, as we've worked through this, we've developed a good cost structure, but as we move forward with this, we need to make our expectations clear with the Navy, so, Sean has done a nice job of putting numbers together, but we also have to, uh, express our expectations. And I think some of these are what our suggestions are, and should be, they won't be included in the report, but should be included in the transmittal that we sent the Navy. Uh, my first item is, the results of this report are, are good till September 1st, 2020. Uh, it does have a shelf life on it, uh, we will be going to the next, we're on the budget cycle, and so we need to start making some decisions. After that, all, all, all assumptions can be changed because at that point, we, we start a new budget cycle and how we, how we plan this for. So we pretty much said we need a decision or some, some, uh, indication moving forward by that date, and that's just about 14 months away. I think that would be a good timing, and also the Navy's got certain decisions they need to make and certain aspects of the lagoon that are gonna come apparent in June, so their, their ability to make a decision may be encouraged by that, so we think that's a good timing. Uh, this report responds to the Navy's request for a proposal. They gave us flows to give them numbers on, and our report does reflect that. During the analysis, uh, we found that the flows that they, uh, requested do not match our experience. We have decades in that facility, uh, measuring the flows, and so what we see differs from, uh, what they requested differs from our historical records. So we are providing them what they requested in the RFP, but any contract negotiations need to include financial mechanisms to true up the cost, reflecting our actual cost impacts. So, uh, we feel comfortable presenting with this proposal because the structure's there, but-
Just, sorry, so I'm understanding correctly, the numbers that Sean just presented are those based on Navy's numbers or our numbers?
Those are based on our numbers.
Our numbers, okay.
City's calculation.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, we do, we are prepared to give them their own numbers based on their flows, but it's just a percentage. It's about a million dollars difference. Right? Correct. So, again, we want to be clear that, yeah, we're responding to their RFP, but, uh, we feel differently about what their actual impact to us is.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
And Brett, we talked about this, so I just want to make sure, because that'll go both ways. We can use our numbers for this, but if the Navy's numbers come in, uh, there's, there's ways- Yeah. To refund some of that, as well as if our numbers are on the white side.
Yeah.
We're gonna put, um, language in the contract that says we can recover.
Yeah.
So that number can go either way as, as, and that's how that contract proposal is going to read, correct?
Yeah, basically, we're just saying, at this point, we're making them aware that we are, any final negotiations are based on actual impacts. we are, any final negotiations are based on actual impacts. And I could say, we are responding legally to an RFP, so we do need to provide the products that they've requested. This report reflects the clean water facility's current MPDS requirements. This is our regulatory requirements. We just issued a new, got a new permit about a year ago. As I've discussed in other meetings, there is right now major changes in regulatory standards, so any changes in regulatory standards, such as nutrient standards, could affect final cost considerations. So if we move forward with this thing, depending on how things happen in the regulatory environment, it could change us. Right now, we're feeling pretty good about it, but the issue is, if we go back to DOE with a planned expansion, they could hit us some standards. Now, we don't think there's a high likelihood of that, but that's something that we need to, at the time it happens, we need to be able to add that into any final cost considerations. These costs do not include costs for complying with federal EIS requirements or Navy security requirements, that the properties we're talking about, especially for the pipeline, are on the Navy base, and they have their own set of environmental standards and security standards that could impact things. And a big thing that comes to mind is archaeology. The areas we're talking about for these pipelines are archaeologically active, and this would probably involve some kind of MOA. We have a good history with archaeology these days, but again, it's a new agreement. I want to make it clear that all costs in this report are based on engineering and budgetary estimates. I think we're using like category five estimate, which is basically order of magnitude. At this point, we're giving estimates with a certain range of accuracy. As we move forward, we've all had experience during the clean water facility of cost increases, so any contract cost will reflect our actual city cost of time of negotiation or time of bid. We need to make it clear that, you know, this is a proposal, but it's not lump sum. All work in this project will comply with city, county, and state and federal requirements. The federal government has a different jurisdiction or different legal basis than we do. We have to comply with these things, so if we're doing it, we're going to have to do it our way. And not to say they're taking shortcomings, but they just have different standards than we do. This report assumes that the Navy will provide right-of-way easements or access for any city facilities located on federal property. We have a long history of working on the seaplane base, but it changes over time, and for us to operate and maintain facilities, we need access. And so also, they have to deed us the right to use the property, and with them, it could go right entry, there's a lot of different legal ways to do that, but that does make that assumption. I think this is a major issue. Any financing provided by the city will require financial security from the federal government. We need to be sure that if we take the risk or invest the money, we're a hole at the end. And so if they decide to close the base and we're halfway through a term, we need to make sure that gets paid. The costs do not include outfall repair, lagoon decommissioning, or wetland restoration at the lagoon site. These are activities that are, we have some budget for some of these activities already. They are not included in this estimate. Wetland restoration is something we would be interested in. There's a lot of interest with environmental restoration at site, but right now, it's not included in this project. It's not to say we wouldn't participate in the future, but at this point, we're keeping it pretty narrow. And I think the major issue is, the Navy elects to proceed with options presented in this report. It's all subject to a final contract negotiation and finalize the costs and detailing terms and conditions. We're just trying to get a good view of where we're going, but it's going to take a lot more work to get us to that point. But if they decide to move along, it's just, this is just the first step in the process they decide to move forward. Anyway, our recommendation is to authorize the mayor to submit the proposal regarding wastewater treatment plant connection fee and treatment rate analysis as outlined in the Navy's request for quotations. I'm not going to read the number out. Questions?
Before we do that, make sure that, see if anybody from the public has any input or questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it to council, Councilor Almberg.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment you, Brett, and the rest of the staff and the consultants on the way you have packaged this and put it forward. You know, in the previous meetings and we've had over this, it's complicated, there's a lot of paper, a lot of numbers, but this was a very, very good job, easy to understand. So thank you to all of you. Couple of quick questions, you've answered most of them. On the alternate one, $38 million versus alternate number two, taking something for 20 years, I'd rather take it, bird in the hand is worth two in the bush to me. And I hope that we look at it that way, because I don't think the way the numbers are presented, even though it's at 4.5% of interest rate, that it really includes the value of inflation, the reduced value of the dollar, taken at 20 years down the road over installments. That's why I'd rather have the money. And maybe there's an answer or comment to that.
Don't disagree with your statement on the time value of money on that. We tied it to that municipal bond. It's something we could look at, where we tie it to the municipal bond plus a risk premium is another way to look at that approach, to where it does include the value or compensate the city for the risk of taking on this financing.
I personally would like to see it go more that way than to get locked into 4.5. Is there also, is there a potential that we are creating an arbitrage situation by having 4.5 versus our cost of money at about 2%?
No, I don't believe so. The reason yours is so low is because you've actively received SRF, the loan interest loan programs. That typical municipal revenue bond, which is the general financing for utilities, is going to be double that at least generally. So you're going to be up in the 4% to 5% range historically. In the recession, we were down in the threes, but going forward, it's going to be at this level or up.
But the, now, I know this is getting too far into the weeds at the moment, but the SRF funds have a lot of strings attached to it, too.
Absolutely.
And if we're taking it at 1.2% and 1.6%, and then we are doing essentially an expansion and bringing another party into paying for our debt that was at 1.2% and 1.6%, are those terms of the SRF funds going to require us to compensate the state for that? That's where the arbitrage steps in.
No.
Yeah. Go ahead.
We're not making money off. We are basically charging a rate and charging a debt service charge, so if we are taking that.
For only the improvements for them.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, the use of the municipal revenue bond was more of a surrogate to come back to a method to amortize that cost at a value that the city would incur the cost at. That's really what we were trying to come back to.
All right, and then quickly...
Also, may I add to that, too, is I did have a note about financial security. We did not have bond counsel on this team, though we recently proposed that. Any further discussions needs to deal with a lot of those issues in more detail.
Yeah, okay. All right. Then where's the value for the Navy, where's the value to the city for the Navy accelerating the, diminishing our future capacity on that plant? We're going to have to update it at a future date for more capacity if we stay on schedule.
Well, the first value, and we can't really quantify at this point, is more customers lowers everybody's rate. So that's, and that could be significant for us, but at this point, we don't have a good feel for that.
But they're using up almost 20% right away. It's an accelerated rate.
They're using up 20% of our capacity to sell, which lowers our life, but remember, our buying of new capacity is a lot cheaper because our system is set up. So buying that next stage of capacity isn't the same cost that we paid in the last project. So we're buying aeration and we're buying more membrane capacity. So to us...
In that physical facility.
In that physical facility.
But at some point, we're going to use up that physical facility.
But that physical facility is good, you know, we'll be at 2060 is what it's good for, we'll pull it back to 2055. That's still a long ways out, and this doesn't account for changes in technology or that type of thing.
Okay.
So I would say that we're trading off that long-term life, which is somewhat nebulous for...
The bird in the hand.
Bird in hand.
Thank you, Brett. Thank you very much.
Councilor Sarah Beatty.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Almberg had the same word, diminished capacity. I'll follow up on that then. Overall capacity, we know we have a housing concern, call it whatever word you want to use. The Navy housing already exists, so that's not bringing any new people here or housing any new people here that are currently traveling from off-island. What kind of capacity do we have moving forward over the next 10, 20 years with this plant? Let's say we add the Navy, how much more capacity for new housing do we have?
We have, our new capacity is a function of how many membranes we buy. So I could say, our capacity in structure is good to 2055. What we'd be doing is buying more membranes and more aeration capacity, but that's a mechanical cost, it's not a structural cost.
So let me ask you, and I get that, but how about the headworks, the 17 million gallon peak flow?
Again, that's designed for 2060, and we'd be back to 2055.
But not just years, give me some estimates in houses.
In houses...
Because so many people, if they all flush the toilet at once, it's going to hit the headworks at once. What kind of capacity do we have?
Not enough.
I was curious.
Nah, well, and that's where we started getting into nerd-dom, and peak full capacity is a function of your pipe sizing and pipe, amount of pipe length. And so that would necessarily be a change, so we have to look at, go back to that list, start looking at each one of those components. Again, the growth of the city, we have room for about 30%. Right now, we have about 9,000 EDUs. We'll be going up to about 12,000, 12,500 with available onto us. They'll be taking 2,000 of those 2,500, and so, yeah, we have growth, but are we going to double the size of the city? Possibly. I think we have that capacity, but then it becomes a technology issue, and we would then look at other options. But our plan is very flexible for growth. So I don't see it as, I see us losing five years at the end of life, but our cost of growth, like I say, as we grow, we have more customers to help pay for that growth.
Right, and I appreciate that, and I have the same question and concern that Stromberg did. So I will, five years on the tail end because of changing technology, I get that, new technology, new treatment is cheaper than what we've already added. I just want to make sure we're not shortchanging. Bringing the Navy onboard is being a good neighbor, host city for the Navy, but it's not adding any new homes. I want to make sure that as our city, if we have, and I think we do have a deficit currently, we can overcome that, plus accommodate growth for the next 20, 30 years with the plant we have.
I feel very comfortable with that, and again, you have to look at the flexibility of our system and our ability to accommodate new growth is a lot, lot more improved. And, yeah, we're looking at 2055, yeah, we'll be having something, you know, maybe too small, but again, technology changes. But I'm feeling that, yeah, if we want to add, you know, we lose that 22% on a growth curve with a $5 to $10 million investment, we're back to where we are.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Councilor Heisen.
I just have a couple of comments. Sean Corin, this might be apropos of not much, so stop me if I get too off track, but when did you first start consulting with us?
2008.
2008. You're a rock star.
So, thanks.
You're a rock star. No, really, it's, it's one thing to get some paper and look at it and make some numbers, but when you come and do a presentation and answer the questions like you just did, it really shows the value of having that long-term relationship with somebody. You know, you've worked with Kathy, you've worked with Joe, you've worked with Brett, you've worked with Jim. It's, to have somebody that really knows our community, you know, inside and out, I think helps you to create the kind of documents that you gave us tonight, because this is, this is a mind-blowing amount of information, and I don't know if it was Rick or Joel that mentioned it, but it's laid out in a way that's really easy to digest.
Thank you.
And that's no small feat, and I know that you probably didn't do that single-handedly, so thank you to the collective of you.
Pass that along.
Yeah, I really, I wrote it down, equitable share of the value of system capacity, period.
I might add that he's also a wildcat.
I am.
Excellent. As am I. Welcome. Yeah, no, I just, the information that we're going through in the presentation that you've given us and the options and the work that's gone into this, I think just highlights how valuable it is to have someone on long-term, which I've already said, so I'll stop. But yes, thank you. I'm all in. Thank you.
Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sean, for this summary. What I would like to also mention is that Kathy and Brett went over all this in great detail with me for about an hour and a half this week, and so I learned things by repetition, and I'm really impressed with the graph that you guys have on what Sean does, because as you were going through this, Sean was like, that's exactly what Kathy and Brett told me. So I bet we're all right there. When we started considering whether or not we were going to move forward with this, we said we wanted something that was fair and equitable for all parties, but we also said very specifically, we wanted to look at the long-term view of the facility needs and the needs of our community. And I believe this meets those requirements that we initially put behind moving forward. I know there's a lot, a lot of ground to cover between now and before people are putting ink on paper, but I wholeheartedly support this effort and moving forward. Thank you all for your time.
Councilor Almberg.
No, no, no.
Councilor Watzinger.
Oh, did you have another comment, right? Because I was just...
I was just gonna, no, you go ahead.
Well, I was going to read the motion, so.
Oh, good. Read the motion, but I just want to reiterate something. I would like for the staff and the consultants to go forward, I'm supporting this, based on a note that I handed out to the council and to some of the staff on January 2. The preamble to that note is, and this is in the course of us negotiating this, the Navy needs the city of Old Carver's clean water facility more than the city needs the Navy in this situation. And that lagoon is short-lived. I just recently had an opportunity to visit with some of the technical people in Bellingham to see what they are doing and now what they have to do with the increase in the treatment standards. And we are ahead of the curve, and the one thing I would like to do is not wait until September 1, but June 1, to push this thing, to keep the pressure on the Navy. I mean, they can always try to push it down the road, which they're going to try to do anyway, but I still think we have to push back more, because they really do need us in this situation. And I hope the staff and the council, mayor, we all go into this wanting to make a deal, but a deal that's for our citizens, that we don't subsidize, that our ratepayers do not subsidize the Navy as much as we like the Navy, we don't have to subsidize them. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox.
Councilor Watzinger.
Sure. I make a motion to authorize the mayor to submit the proposal regarding a wastewater treatment plant connection fee and treatment rate analysis as outlined in the Navy's request for quotations, the number just as it reads in our recommended action.
Second.
That reads a little differently than the recommended action, I think, but maybe it's an update. Okay, there it is. There it is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that's what she read right there, yes.
I apologize.
That's just a little different than is in my packet, and that's good. That's just a little different than is in my packet, and that's good. So we have a motion and a second. And the motion reads exactly like the recommended action, and the motion is made by Councillor Watzinger, and the second is made by Mayor Potim Munz. Any other input or questions, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you for a lot of hard work.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll be talking again on this, I think, as time goes on. So I think we're at that point in our agenda where we have no more action items. Anything from council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.